Good evening, everyone. If I could have you take a seat. We want to be cognizant of everyone's time this evening, so we want to get started on time. And so candidates, if I can have you go ahead and take your seat as well. We have drawn numbers for their placement. So at this point, we have a couple of announcements we're going to get started with. And my name is Debbie Miller. I'm president with the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. And we are so thrilled that you've come out to our candidates forum. I want to thank first and foremost Black Rabbit Media, who has come in and set up for us to be able to film this. It is not being filmed live. It's not going live, but it will be out on several different venues tomorrow as well. And so we appreciate that as well. You may see behind me that we have six seats set up. It was our hope, and we had tried to work to be able to get all six candidates here this evening. And so should they show, should something change, we are set for them to be able to join us as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Carol Harvory, our moderator, and Carol's going to give you a little bit of rules of engagement. So Carol, we'll get started.
Thank you, Deb. And good evening, and thank everyone for coming tonight, especially candidates, of course. As Deb has mentioned, the candidate seating on the platform was determined by a candidate's draw prior to the commencement of this forum, and the introductions and closing remarks will be given in that same order. The event tonight will be conducted in a forum format. This is not a debate. This is just a deliberate approach intended to give everyone an opportunity to get the issues before the voters, those issues that we all care about before the actual election. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement and an opportunity for a two-minute closing statement. All other responses will be limited to two minutes. Responses to another candidate's remarks will be limited to 30 seconds, and only once for each question. The questions I'll pose to the candidates tonight were compiled by the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. The questions were not shared with the candidates before this forum. And I also wanted to point out that none of the candidates have cell phones or computers. If you need some paper to scratch on, let us know. We can do that for you. They did not see the questions, and nor did I until earlier this afternoon. Following this segment of the forum, I will entertain questions from the press and written questions submitted from the audience. Again, each candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond. And finally, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. I ask that the candidates be respectful of both the timekeeper and other candidates. If you've not figured it out yet, Deb is the timekeeper. And I'd also ask that the audience also respect the candidates and hold your applause, please, until the completion of the closing remarks. We've got 26 questions. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to answer those questions in the two minutes allotted for each. And if we disrupt the conduct of the forum, it will certainly put us here till way later than anyone wants to stay, especially me. So those of you in the audience, you may record the proceedings, but only if it does not interfere with the safe conduct of the forum. And Deb, did you want to talk about where the bathrooms and then?
One of the things I forgot, very first thing you start off with always, in case of an emergency, there's two exits. The exit back behind you and the exit to my right. So in case there's any type of emergency, that would be the exit. In addition, we have two of the chamber board members. I actually have three here tonight. One has pen and paper, and the other one, Vera, will be going around and picking up. Jim will be helping as well. And so if we have time, again, we'll be looking to the press first, and then if there's time for the audience questions, we will do that as well. So Carol, I think we hit the safety measure.
I'd like to introduce the candidates now from my left to right. First is Keegan Barkley. And Seth Bryant. And I will begin our two-minute introductions with Keegan. Give us a second, and we'll get that clock started. You should be able to see the font on this. It's even big enough for older people. There you go. All right, Keegan, please.
All right, so my name is Keegan Barkley, and I've been living in the community for almost 10 years now. This is the place my husband and I decided to buy our first home, and it is the location where we chose to raise our three boys. You know, and our three boys, they attend the traditional public schools. And what I have noticed over the last two years is a degradation of those schools. I've seen teachers leaving, and I've seen the adoption of a subpar academic standard. And this was something that just didn't sit well with me. My professional background is in human resources. I specialize in talent acquisition. And what I saw this board doing was adopting and pushing through these policies without getting any buy-in from the community. I saw them changing things and pushing through policies and pushing through these new initiatives that didn't seem to have anything to do with helping our children learn any better, but were directly tied to this national narrative that they seemed to be following. You know, it seemed to me that my opponent and this current board is spending more time focusing on propelling their own personal political careers rather than paying attention to our students. And I really do fear for what will become of Woodland Park if this continues. I don't know if the town I fell in love with, the town I decided to set my roots in, the town I decided to raise my children in, will still exist if this board gets reelected. So that's why I decided to run for school board. That is what I see is on the line with this election.
Great timing. Again, we'll hold the applause until the end of the closing statements. Thank you. Now, Keegan has a good idea of what two minutes feels like, and you did very good. Mike, if you could go next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mike Knott. I've lived in Woodland Park for about 22 years. I have an older daughter who went through the school system, CSCS, and then the public schools through middle school before she moved. And I currently have a first grader in Columbine. So I have a long... Did I lose that? Okay. So I have a long time where what's happening in the school district is going to directly impact my daughter and my family. When this board, the incumbent board, took office, I pretty quickly became concerned about the policy choices they were making. I saw the adoption of the American birthright standards. I saw teachers leaving the district. I spoke to many teachers who flat-stated that they were tired of working under this board. I saw a gag order put in place onto our teachers. I saw a number of things along those lines that I just simply did not agree with. And what really pushed me over the edge was the declining of the mental health grants, which totaled $1.2 million, and took away services that I think are critical to our children. I think that was very, very significant and a big mistake. And then again, it was the adoption of the standards. And between those things, that's when I decided to put my name in the ring, and that's why I'm sitting here in front of you now.
Thank you, Mike. Seth? Oh, we've got to reset the clock for you. All right, great.
All right. My name is Seth Bryant, and really, I'm just a dad who's concerned about his kids' education. I'm a pretty involved dad. I volunteer in the classroom and on field trips. I love doing that kind of stuff. I've been on school accountability committees, and I was chairman of the district accountability committee for the last year. And through all those avenues of being in our schools and having opportunity to provide input, I have never once felt that this board was listening to stakeholders. And I think that's translated into policies and decisions that have been made by this board. They're not reflective of this community. My youngest is in third grade, and my oldest is in eighth. So I've pretty much got a decade left in the school system, and my oldest is going through four of the most critical years, you know, for shaping his future and his preparedness for the world. So I'm very concerned about what's happening here. Just like Keegan and Mike, I've watched academic opportunities diminish. We have half the dual enrollment classes that we've had before, or AP classes are packed to the brim because we don't have enough qualified teachers to offer more sessions. And I just see division being caused by this board and its decisions and that lack of listening to stakeholders. And that's not what made me fall in love with this community. We moved here for that small mountain town. We are very committed to helping Woodland Park stay a small mountain town. That's really why we chose to live here. So I'm here because I'm concerned. I'm here because I want to hear what my community has to say, and I want our schools to reflect that shared vision that we have as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. The next two questions will be asked of all three of you. So I will start again with Keegan. The questions following will be an individual question for each of you, and each of you having an opportunity to respond in a 30-second soundbite. So our first general question, what experiences have prepared you to serve as a Woodland Park School District school board member?
Yeah, so as I said in my opening remarks, I work in human resources. I specialize in talent acquisition. So a lot of what I do on my day-to-day is working with people. I work within conflict resolution. I work in, you know, speaking with our hiring managers to make sure that they can articulate and they understand what their needs are, what does their team need. I get them to articulate that, and then I help them build a plan to go out and find those resources, interview them, and bring them in. Right now, I see with the teacher shortage that being able to bring in the right and the qualified individuals into our district is hugely important. So that's one of the things I feel I can bring that will really help in this situation. But also then, just the conflict resolution, right? When you work in human resources, a lot of time you have to balance the needs of the entire company as well as the needs of the individual. So you have to be able to listen to what someone is coming to you, what they're saying their problem is. Make sure you understand the root of that problem. Make sure they understand the root of that problem. And then be able to take that to the larger organization and find a solution, making sure that everyone's needs are kind of covered there, making sure that everyone feels heard and represented. So again, those are things I see as critical right now here in Woodland Park and really just for a school board in general.
Thank you. Mike, do I need to repeat it, or are you ready to go?
No, I'm good.
Thanks.
I'm good. Wait, what was the question again? What I bring is strong roots in this community, for one. I've never seen division of the type that's happened over the last couple of years in this town. This is not the town that I remember that was very much a live-and-let-live kind of community. And so I missed that, and I'd like to bring that back. One, I've also been... It's really strange how breaks out and in. I've been a business owner. I'm currently an executive director of a nonprofit up here, so I've been managing people for over 20 years in my professional career. And one of the biggest things I've learned over that is that if you have a staff, if you have stakeholders, if you're looking to get people pulling in the dressing room, must communicate openly and clearly to get stakeholder buy-in. You must listen to the various groups or individuals affected by the decisions you're making, and you must get them to at least understand why you're doing what you're doing. Until you can do that, I think you're really behind the eight ball. And that's one thing that I know I can bring. I have a lot of experience with that, and it's something that I think is absolutely critical and necessary now. The fact is, these schools, many of them, are in crisis right now. There is no way around it. We are bleeding teachers. We're bleeding students. And we have got to start drawing back quality teachers and keep the students we have and hopefully attract those that have chosen to opt out of our district. And I think the biggest thing that we can do in that is to open the communication lines. We have got to communicate clearly what is happening, why it's happening, get input, consider it, and then very clearly outline the plans of the policies that we're going to implement for everyone to hear. And that's the only way I see that we can move forward.
Thank you. Seth?
Well, aside from being a parent, I have worked in schools for a few years. Although I was never an educator or administrator, I did have an opportunity to see the inner workings of schools, and I've got a decent understanding of the types of supports that they need to be successful. In addition to having worked in schools, I've got a deep corporate background in information security and cybersecurity. And although that does not directly translate, I've got a few skills that I definitely bring to the table. One of those is root cause analysis. I really have a passion for digging down to what is actually going on and, you know, seeing past the symptoms. From that, I can engineer solutions. For me, that is often involved working with diverse groups of people, other technology professionals, business professionals, lawyers. Even in my current role, I talk to grocery store managers to get to the bottom of problems and figure out how to do better at things. So that is certainly one skill that I bring. Additionally, I have been in quite a few different leadership positions in my past, anywhere from nonprofit organizations like scouting, where I've been a pack chair, to a trustee in a large trust that oversees over seven figures of funds. So I have experience coming to consensus with groups, to driving groups towards decision and in respectful discourse and even disagreement. We may not always agree on things, Mike, Keegan, and I, but I know that we've got the skills to work together towards positive solutions, that at least everybody's going to understand how we got there and why we made that decision.
Thank you, Seth. And the next question will be for all three of you, but I'm going to start from your end, Seth. The next question is, what do you see as the primary work for a school board member and the school board collectively?
A school board member, I think, needs to represent the platform upon which they were elected and the stakeholders that they're representing. So in this case, the members of our district. The board itself, their job is to govern a district and give the administration and leadership framework and structure to actually run a school district.
Mike, same question.
Sure. I think the role of the board is to act as a bridge between the school district and the community. I believe that a school district reflects the over... of a community. And so I think that the board itself should serve as that bridge between the two entities. And I think the board has one employee, which is the superintendent. So the most critical decision a board can make is who they hire as the superintendent, and then to direct that superintendent to implement the policies of that board and of the district. And that, I think, is an absolutely, probably, like I said, the most important decision that they'll make, is who they choose as the superintendent. I also think a board needs to be reflective of the community as a whole. So I think it needs to have very open communication lines so that it's hearing feedback from members. I think it needs to act in an open capacity across the board. So there should not be backroom deals. There should not be preordained decisions made, debates. Even basic information should be happening in a public forum at board meetings, and the conversations about why the yeses, the noes, the maybes, the debates should all be happening in that open forum.
Thank you, Mike. Keegan, same question.
You leave me much to say there, did you? Yeah, no. So I agree wholeheartedly that the role of the school board is to be that bridge, right? So to me, what that means is that we, as a board, need to be the place people feel safe and people feel comfortable coming to when they have questions, when they have concerns, when they don't understand something. I want this community to feel like they can come to me, that they can come to this board, and that they'll know that those concerns will be addressed at a public school board meeting, that they know they're going to be respected for having those concerns, for having those questions, and that they're going to be treated as adults, and that I will represent them on this board. As again Mike said, our sole employee is the superintendent. So my view of the job in that regard is to make sure that the superintendent is following his duties to the law. We need to make sure that if we have a vision and a mission, that he is living up to that or she is living up to that. We cannot allow someone to go rogue or to push their own personal feelings, their own personal agendas, onto our schools just because they hold the title of superintendent. The school board's job is to hold them accountable and make sure that they don't have free rein to do whatever they like.
Thank you, Keegan. Now, the next set of questions will be asked of an individual candidate, but the other two candidates will then be allowed to respond, if you want. You don't have to, in 30 seconds. So I'm going to start with Seth on this one. Seth, you just described your primary work for a school board member. Please describe the role of the school superintendent. What is the ideal relationship you envision between the school board and the superintendent?
The superintendent is the primary administrator in the district. He helps oversee the principals and manage them and also equip them to be able to do their jobs and implement the directives that are being passed down by leadership. In addition to that, they have operational duties, the day-to-day business of running a district, human resources-type actions, policy decisions, those types of things, being an executive figurehead for the district as well, that spokesperson and characterizing our district. Could you repeat the second part of the question there?
The second part is, what's the ideal relationship that you would envision between the school board and the superintendent?
Thank you very much. Collaborative. I believe the board is ultimately the decision-maker and the decision-driver, but it should be a feedback cycle. It should be, what do you think of this? Well, as a subject matter expert in, you know, administration or education, this is what I think of that. And the board should be informed and potentially revising their positions or decisions based off that information. So very much so collaborative.
Thank you. Either one of you would like to comment on that relationship between the superintendent and the board? Okay. The next question will go to Mike. Mike, what are the most important characteristics of a positive and productive school board and superintendent working relationship? It really builds on what Seth has already discussed, but we'll let you maybe do a deep dive on that again. What are the most important characteristics of a positive and productive school board and a superintendent working relationship? And Seth, you want to pass Mike your... Pass Mike your mic. Thank you. Just, we'll see how it works.
We'll see if this one works better. All right, after that...
What's the most important characteristic of a positive relationship between the board and the superintendent?
Well, I think it starts with a clear definition of what roles belong to which person. You know, I think the, as Seth pointed out, the board is in a position of oversight over the superintendent. So I think the superintendent, as the sole employee of the board, is beholden to implement the policies of the board. I also think that there does need to be that collaborative back and forth between the two. The fact of the matter is, the superintendent should be in all the schools regularly. The superintendent should be listening to the principals. The superintendent should be listening to the students. Superintendent should be listening to the parents. They're kind of that, beyond the teachers, they're that next line of administration in the district. So I think there has to be an ongoing back and forth because any policies that we implement are going to be potentially affected by what that feedback is. You know, if we think a policy is going to work and then we get feedback, it's not. We have to be flexible enough to make those changes. We have to work with the superintendent so that we're all pulling in the direction so that if we do make those changes, they're able to implement them in an effective way.
Thanks, Mike. Keegan or Seth? Any more to add to that question? Keegan, here's your question. As you've considered either continuing as a board member, and this question was written in hopes that we would have six candidates there, or becoming a board member, what are two or three current practices that you believe makes our school district great?
That's a good question. I think right now what we have in this community is a wonderful collaboration and a lot of participation from the community. You know, I think back to just, what, two weeks ago at the Homecoming Parade, and it felt like the entire town was out there to celebrate the high school football team, but also just celebrate the entire school. Everyone was wearing their green. Everyone had their gear on. You know, everyone was just living and being in that supportive and proud environment. And I think that's something that this community does particularly well.
I'm going to carry that question then to, what are two or three things that you believe we can do better in the school district?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we've all kind of alluded to this already, but I think there's a lack of communication happening right now. You know, I've been to school board meetings. I've spoken at several. And, you know, what we see or what I've seen and felt when I do that is that there isn't a whole lot of actual listening happening there. You know, you see the board members, the current board members, speaking to each other while other people are talking. They're looking at their phones. And then nothing ever seems to be done with what has been brought up. They thank you for speaking, and you sit down, and then they go on with business as usual as if no one had gotten up to speak at all. So I think that's something that could be improved pretty easily. That would help.
Is, and the rest of this question is, are there practices that you think could be eliminated for the better of the school district? You may have just answered that, but please add if you have anything.
Yeah, well, I think one of the things that has happened in recent years is that the hiring practices, which used to belong to the individual schools and the individual principals and administrators to figure out, has been removed from those particular locations. And the school board and the superintendent have kind of taken over those duties and have final say on who's hired at this point. And what I see that happening with that is a slowdown in being able to hire. So again, specializing in talent acquisition, one of the things we focus on is sometimes the head of a department isn't the right person to be in charge of the decision-making of who's hired because they have far too many other things going on their plate. They can't be responsible for everything. So we ask them to delegate a hiring team, and then that team is entrusted with understanding what is needed and being the ones to kind of implement that. They're the ones that do the hiring. They're the ones that make the okay because they have the trust of the higher leadership. And so I think if we can bring it back to that kind of situation, it would help things move along much more smoothly.
30 seconds for either one of you.
Yeah, I would say one thing I think that the district has gotten right over the last couple of years is the approval of Merit Academy. I think that's a net positive for the community, and I'm glad they approved it. I don't think it was done in the most open, transparent way, and I think that contributed to a lot of the bad feelings that we hear about and see and sense. But I do think that that's a net positive for the district overall. And a couple of the negative things real quick that I would like to see removed is, one, the gag order on the teachers. That's got to go day one. And the other thing is, I think we need a new district attorney.
I appreciate the enthusiasm in the audience, but again, please, let's wait till we have closing statements. Seth, if you have a 30-second response as well.
Absolutely. I think we do a couple of things great as a district. We have a lot of amazing parents in schools providing support and volunteering. Every time I'm in one, I see it, and I love seeing that. I think another thing we do is the principals do an amazing job building community at their schools. Every school I've been at, people, you can tell, feel like they belong. They know what's happening at the schools for a large part, and they... a large part, and they feel like the administration's approachable.
Thank you, Seth. Mike, this one will be your individual question. What's the best way to address differences of opinion on a school board?
Debate them in public. I mean, that's kind of the beginning and end of it. I think that, I think we should, as a community, have an expectation that there will be disagreements amongst Board of Education members. One of the things I've been most concerned by is, I cannot remember a dissenting vote from the incumbent board as it exists. That, to me, is not effective democracy. It's not an effective school board. There should be open debate, whereas an information is presented to the board in a public forum, and then it's openly discussed and debated. And I, there should be disagreements. There should, not every vote of the school board should be five to zero. That is not an effective way to operate a school district. The fact is, not everybody in the district agrees with everything, so why should the board members be expected to? The fact that that's what we see is a major red flag.
Thanks, Mike. 30 seconds for Keegan or Seth?
So just to add to that a little bit, you know, discussion needs to happen, too. It's not just about debate on the board or in that public meeting, but about questioning, right? Like, when something new is brought in, you can't expect everyone sitting there to have a very clear, thorough understanding of exactly what's being said. So there needs to be questions asked that we know, and so that the community knows, that the board members are making decisions based on actual facts, and that they have a full understanding of what the repercussions of those decisions are. And right now, I don't see that happening. So.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to agree with both Mike and Keegan here. We do it through respectful discussion. It's okay for us to disagree. There are currently a lot of nice people on the school board who are not doing what it takes to be in that type of leadership position. Unfortunately, it would be great if we could just go along with everything, because it's how it should be run, but there does need to be discussion, because we live in a diverse community of diverse opinion. And so I know there are going to be times we disagree. I look forward to those times. It's an opportunity to show our community how we can do it respectfully.
Thank you, Seth. Keegan, this is your individual question. What is your responsibility as a school board member to ensure standards and curriculum are aligned with the state's standards? And should teachers have input to the curriculum?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think the first thing would be to know what the state's standards are. I think they should, whenever we're discussing curriculum or deciding if we're going to change something, we need to know what those standards are, and we need to make sure that we're double-checking that any proposed new curriculum that has come forward will meet those. And that's not just to, you know, step in line, although I would never do anything to cause our school to have any form of litigation brought against us because we're not following proper law. But I, you know, it's also making sure that our students are set up to succeed. We don't want to be a school that is adopting curriculum that does not allow them to compete with students coming from other schools. And then as far as the teachers, yes, I absolutely believe that the teachers, they're part of the stakeholders here. They understand how the students are receiving that curriculum. They understand how, you know, what works and what doesn't, because they're right there, you know, boots on the ground. They know what's happening. So I believe they should be a part of it, as well as the community at large.
Thank you, Keegan. Mike or Seth?
Yeah, I would just add on, I think you cannot create and decide on an effective curriculum without teacher input. In fact, I think it goes beyond, do we consider them? I think they're a critical piece of it. The fact is, I am not a trained educator. Our teachers are. And many, many of our teachers have been taught how to create curriculums. It would be incredibly irresponsible and foolish not to listen.
Seth? And again, you don't have to comment, but you certainly may.
You telling me something?
Not at all.
I will just add on that, I think it's important we focus on curriculum, as the state Board of Education is the only body that has the statutory authority to set standards. What Keegan talked about, about acting lawfully, I think is very important. When we go outside of our defined capability as a governing body, we open ourselves to litigation, and that, of course, you know, goes to legal fees, which translates to money not spent on students. So it's important we stay focused on what our role is and how we can best do it.
Okay. I'm going to come back to you with your own individual question. Seth, how would you address differences of opinion between the school board and district employees?
So I believe the school board is primarily going to be involved in the difference of opinion with one district employee, that being the superintendent as our sole employee. There's, to me, a proper chain of command in a lot of organizations. In jumping that chain of command, might open you up to, again, be a litigious target. So I think it's very important that we hire a superintendent that we're going to be able to engage with, even in disagreement, and that we instruct them to hire principals who hire teachers the same way. Really, we should be, all be able to function in disagreement with each other, and it's okay if resolution doesn't happen at one level, but we should be able to escalate appropriately and still respectfully. I think that there's just so much opportunity to apply, you know, who we are as neighbors in dealing with each other and all sorts of other relationships. So if a teacher comes to a principal, and that situation can't be resolved, and they're having to go to a superintendent, I would hope that superintendent's going to come to us and say, hey, how do we feel about this? This is my gut on how to deal with this situation, so that it doesn't even get escalated to another level, that we're able to, again, collaborate. And I'd hope that that superintendent would have that same type of availability and offer that same type of support to their principals, so that we're able to deal with disagreement at, you know, the levels it's happening at.
Thanks, Seth. Mike or Keegan? Okay. Mike, then the next question will be for you. What role should the school board play in academic achievement, and how will you be accountable for the outcomes as a school board member?
I think the school board has a critical role to play in academic achievement. One of the primary places being to define what academic achievement is for this community. I also believe that one key tool that the board should implement immediately is the creation of a five-year strategic plan for the district. Right now, I know there are a number of different curriculums being used by different schools at different levels, and it may not be possible to align all of those, but I do think that, you know, you've got to have everybody pulling in the same direction. And I think a strategic plan is the way to do that. Now, that's a process, so it's going to take, you know, up to a year to determine what the strategic plan is. But that would be absolutely with stakeholder input, including community members, not just parents. I'm talking taxpayers as well, parents, teachers, admin, school board. All those should have a voice in how we define academic achievement. Then I think what we have at the end of that process is you've got clear goals, and you've got clearly defined ways that you're going to measure whether you're reaching those goals. And I think that's something the district needs right now. We haven't had a strategic plan for 10 years, and we need one now, especially after what's happened over the last two years. The fact is, our schools, you know, I'm thinking especially of Gateway, has a lot of uncertainty with it, and a tremendous amount of staff turnover. You know, you see new staff like that. It's a lot easier to incorporate new folks when you've got a clear direction of where they're going. And until you have that, everybody can just easily end up spinning out into circles, and that's a waste of everybody's time and effort.
Thank you. Seth or Keegan? Keegan, what current issues do you believe the Woodland Park School District needs to address in its current academic programs, and what changes would you make, if any, or recommend to make?
Can I ask you to clarify what you mean by programs?
What current issues do you believe the school district needs to address in its current academic programs? And if you were to make any recommendation as a board member, what would it be?
So by programs, do you mean like classes and?
I think so, having not written the question.
Thank you.
Yes, that's exactly what I meant.
Okay. So what changes? So, I mean, I think the first thing to look at is the adoption of the American Birthright Standard. So again, as Seth said earlier, the state is really the only governing body that has the ability to set standards. The schools have the ability to set curriculum that meets those standards, so that's where we have our autonomy and our ability to, you know, be individual there and make those choices. But the state sets the curriculum, and so, or the standard, sorry. And so, you know, I think first and foremost, we need to make sure that all of our curriculum is actually meeting those state standards, which they currently do not. You know, even according to the district website, you can look on there, you know, it says various things about how our social studies curriculum, or social studies curriculum in particular, is not meeting standards. We know that they are trying to create a curriculum using the American Birthright Standard, and then adding things in to gain approval from the state. But as far as I know, as of today, we have not received, you know, approval on that. As far as I know, we haven't actually even completed creating the curriculum. So we need to make sure that we have a full curriculum, and curriculum takes time to build. I think generally, they say at least a year to create a curriculum before you can feel comfortable implementing it. So making sure that we have a set curriculum before a school year starts, rather than trying to kind of shoehorn and MacGyver a curriculum as the school year is going on.
Thanks. Mike? Seth?
Yeah, I'll just add on with Keegan that there's, we need to make sure that the curriculum and the classes that we're developing for our students are going to be beneficial for them outside of Woodland Park School District. If you look at the course catalog on the district website right now, as it is today, it lists a number of our social studies classes, like world geography, like American history, that are in development, but it clearly defines them as not being NCAA-approved yet, which does not impact a huge portion of our students, but it's really an additional unfair burden to place on our student athletes, that they would now have to go see classes online or outside of our school system to be able to participate at that next level.
Thank you. Seth, this will be your question. And dear to me, I have a daughter with Down syndrome, and the public school system has been wonderful in her development. But what is your belief about the role special education plays within the district?
Well, aside from having the legal obligation to provide education for our special-needs community members, I am very much in favor of the strategy that the district has used in the past, which is, wherever possible, have our special-needs students, our special education students, in the same classroom, learning with the rest of our kids, wherever possible. There are varying levels of how that's accomplished. I know from being in the classroom with some of my boys, sometimes that's as easy as having a para in the room to help that student with their interventions, or being able to go out into the hall and do whatever they need to do to get that student back on track. To, obviously, with some of our more impacted special-needs kids, having really hand-holding their support and special programs lined up for them. Right now, for our most special-needs kids, we're not really able to offer those types of supports, and we've partnered with other institutions down in the Springs and at other districts to give our kids their legally obligated and entitled education. But we've lost a lot of special educators as well, and that means we're sending more kids out to get services that we previously could provide. And unfortunately, that costs more. It's outsourcing. It's going to cost us more than doing it in-house with the people that are already budgeted for. And when we're taking those dollars and providing what we should for those kids, in maybe situations we don't need to, that's translating to lost services for the rest of our kids. So I would like to see us hire our special educators back. I'd like to see us move those services in-house so that we can be more efficient with our funds.
Thank you, Seth. Mike or Keegan?
Yeah, so I was just going to bring up where the school comes in. So an IEP is an individual education plan. That is a legal contract signed by the district and a student's parents. Sometimes those IEPs include mental health services, because some of these children, that's where their needs lie. Some of them, it's speech therapy. Sometimes it's, you know, additional extra time on things, or extra classes. And we need to make sure, legally and morally, that we have those services available for those students. Again, you know, we set up ourselves for some serious litigation if we are not fulfilling those contracts. So it's vitally important that we do.
Thank you, Keegan. Mike?
Yeah, I would just add on to that very briefly, that, you know, I think this is another area that's impacted by the 15 professionals who were removed from the district with the lack of grants being renewed. They were part of the team that would often address an IEP with a student, and so the burden that has been placed on the teachers that are left trying to serve that need is far greater than it should be. So we have got to rebuild those programs immediately.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, your question. What strategies will you bring that will create an atmosphere of trust, continuity, and improvement for the district and the school board?
Well, I've mentioned a couple of them already, but to reiterate, open communication is a key one. A strategic plan is a key piece of that. I think you need to reach out to, you know, when you're talking, you know, teacher retention, when you're talking students leaving the district, I think we should be reaching out to those parents of those students who have chosen to opt out of our schools to find out exactly why. Why did they choose to leave? What was their reason? I think that is a key piece of this. The same goes for the teachers that have left, you know? And I keep hearing that, oh, the schools are better than ever. No, they're not. I don't know how many of you have walked through one of our schools right now, but the morale is incredibly low at our schools right now, or most of our schools. They're really struggling there. And I think, you know, we've got to be addressing that need to find out what has happened so that we can address it. And I think the biggest piece of that is getting politics out of the school district. We have to deal with our teachers, our students, our community, not based on national talking points, but based on what our community is actually asking us for. And that is where our focus needs to lie.
Thank you, Mike. Keegan or Seth? Okay. Seth, as, I'm sorry, this is Keegan's. Keegan, as a school board member, when contacted by students, or staff, or parents, or community members in reference to school-related issues, what would be your role in addressing questions to provide answers? And how would you handle the pressures? Boy, that's a good one. I want to hear this.
Well, I think first is responding. You know, anytime, you know, simple things. Anytime that someone comes to me, I will acknowledge that I have heard their question or their concern, or whatever it is. If I have the answer, I will do my best to articulate that answer to them. If I don't have the answer, I'm going to go find it, right? They've come to me for a reason. This is something that's important to them, and as my job, I see it as being an elected official, would be to represent them and make sure that those concerns are addressed. So I will answer whatever questions I can right away, and if I don't, I will ask them to hold on while I go and find the right answer. And then as far as the pressure, again, I think, you know, when you treat people with respect, when you, when you, when they know that they're heard, when they know that their questions are not falling on deaf ears, I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of pressure. I see this being a much more civil situation, where people will just say, hey, what's going on with this? And it's not going to be a whole lot of pressure.
Thanks, Mike. 30 seconds?
Yeah, I would say, you know, one thing that's been interesting, running for elected office the first time, is there's a big difference between the keyboard warriors and talking to somebody eye to eye. It's remarkable. It truly is. There've been some folks that have said some, some real negative things about me personally, that I have spoken to directly, eye to eye, when I've had the chance, and boy, does that temperature turn right down when it happens. It's a lot harder to be a bully when you're facing somebody eye to eye. So I would encourage that at every turn.
Seth?
I'm right there with Keegan. I'm happy to respond to people to the best of my ability. I, I'm happy to respond to people to the best of my ability. If I don't know the answer, I'm going to try and direct you to where we can get it. And really, I'm, I'm just looking to treat people like I, I do in everyday situations. I moved to a small town because I have the opportunity to know my neighbors and to interact with people on a one-on-one basis. We are all human. I guarantee none of us thinks we're the bad guy. So let's, let's try and understand, you know, where each other are coming from. So I'll give you the courtesy of a response. I will do my best to understand where you're coming from and I'll do my best to explain where I'm coming from. And we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Seth. Seth, this is your question. What specific steps would you take as a school board member to improve transparency and make school district information more widely available?
There are a few things. I would like to see all courses and curriculums published on the district and school websites. That way it's really easy for parents to look up, to see what their kids are going to be learning, how they're going to be learning it. The second part is just moving conversations to the public forum. No more leadership by surprise. I think if we're considering changing something, let's talk about how we're considering changing it and invite stakeholders in to be part of that informative process that helps us make our decision. And then another thing with the Colorado Open Records Act, CORA, we've received a lot of those requests as a district. I'm hoping, first off, by increasing transparency and having discussions in the public forum, that diminishes those requests, which translates to less money spent on that, more student services. But also, we have an opportunity, I think, that if one person's interested in something, there are probably a lot more. So I think it'd be very easy for us to keep an archive of all the CORA released documents on our district webpage, just to make that information more accessible to the community.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, one other specific thing I would like to do is put the authority to choose DAC representatives back with the principals and take it away from the Board of Education. I believe that if you have a board choosing their own representatives for the district accountability committee, you're in an echo chamber. And that does nobody any good unless you're pushing a political ideology. In our case, that would not be anything I would advocate for. I would put that authority back on the principals so that they could choose. I would like to actually increase DAC representation for both students and for Merit Academy, actually, too. I think if we're going to be a district, we have got to be a district. We cannot be a district divided.
Thank you. Keegan?
Yeah, just a little something to add to that. At some of our meet and greets, we had parents ask about, you know, the, the way a school board meeting is set up, where the parents come up, they ask questions, but that's not, that's almost never actually addressed during the meeting. And so I think there's an opportunity there, not to necessarily address it right away or right after they speak, but you know, when you're making those discussions available in the public, when you're making decisions at those board meetings, then when parents or community members come, they can read the agenda. They know exactly what's going to happen at those meetings. And so their questions can be related to those. You allow them, you know, the public to have their speak before decisions are made. And then as a board, you can discuss the things that were brought up during that public comment section as part of the discussion when you're making those decisions.
Thank you. Mike, staff retention is an ongoing concern for school districts across the nation. In this past year, in our school district, there's been a significant turnover in the schools. What strategy should a school board implement to retain staff?
Well, I think it starts with the superintendent that you hire as a school board. You have to have in the situation wherein now, you have to get a creative experience superintendent who hopefully has experience dealing with a district in crisis, which is how I characterize us right now. So I think it starts with that. I think you also have to look at, again, teachers who have left the district. Why? You know, I acknowledge that this board did approve a raise for the teachers and that's wonderful. But I think it goes beyond that because most of the teachers up here that I know weren't teaching up here strictly for the salary. They were teaching up here because they were part of the community, because they were invested up here. And so I think you need to figure out what was it that drove them off and then bring them back. I think you need to change the culture. Right now, what I see is a very antagonistic relationship between the school board and the teachers. I do not think that's productive and I don't think it does our students any good. We are supposed to be on the same side. We are supposed to be pulling in the same direction. And that requires input from the teachers in order to make that happen.
Thank you. Seth, any 30-second response for that? Staff retention has been a concern for districts across the nation. And obviously, we had significant turnover in our schools this year. What strategies would you implement as a board member? And 30 seconds, please.
So I'm not a hiring specialist. I think Keegan would have a lot to offer on this topic. And whether she's a fellow board member or not, I'd certainly be giving her a call. But I think just changing the tone. We had 81 teachers on the stage behind me just in this last week, talking about the, the working conditions that they're facing and the hostility and unprofessionalism they're being treated with. I think that's really easy to change the tone of that if it comes from top down. So really easily, I will treat our teachers with respect. Changing that culture, I hope, will attract and retain them.
Keegan? Okay. Thank you. Because I thought you were going to be the, the expert, but, and you are, and you are. But this is your question, Keegan. How do you think the school board should be involved in areas of strategic planning and goal setting?
Yeah. So what I see is the school board's role in, in that area is to really be the driving force behind it. So being the ones that are setting up the meetings, setting the time, setting the schedule to make sure that the, those strategic plans are actually being implemented and, and created. So part of that would be making sure we're calling in the correct stakeholders, making sure we're calling in the principals, you know, teachers from each of the buildings, from each of the subjects, so that we understand, you know, where are our areas of weakness, right? Defining what we see as, as academic improvement, defining what we see as an acceptable graduate. Like what does a graduate from Woodland Park look like? What do we expect that they are able to do when they leave the school district? We need to set those standards. And then once you have those set, then we can set goals to meet that, those. So, you know, again, having that framework, they're making sure that everybody knows what those goals are, that they are measurable, that we have a times limit, right? When do we hope to achieve those? And then, you know, what are, how, what do we do if we're not meeting those, right? So we have to have a contingency plan as well.
Thank you. Mike or Seth?
Yeah, as, as a board member, or as a, as a board, we'd be directing, you know, our district to develop that strategic plan. So really driving that process, soliciting stakeholders, driving the superintendent to enlist the principals and other administrators for their input. And then really helping sort through all of that. At, at some point, there's going to be an abundance of information and an opportunity to start making decisions. And that's where we, as board members, are going to come in. It's going to be our, our job to sort through all of the input we've received and then reflect on how, how does this represent WPSD? How does this represent our stakeholders? Is this right for our community and students?
And Mike, did you have a?
Yeah, I would just add real briefly, briefly, for me, a huge part of that is empowering the principals to have a voice in that process. It's empowering the teachers to have a voice in that process. They are supposed to be collaborators with us, not enemies. And that's a culture we have got to change.
Thank you, Mike. Seth, this is a good one. What is the school's, school board's role in budget development for the district?
Well, ultimately, they're, they are the approvers of the district budget. So they should be directing the, the financial services on the priorities of the district and, and how to best allocate our, our dollars. Now, I think that those type of directives should be informed. Currently, the school accountability committees and the district accountability committees are statutorily obligated to review district budgeting priorities. That's fallen short here, especially in the past year. I'd like to see them get much more granular so that we've got really knowledgeable input about not only what's happening and the true dollars available, but where they're going. So many things right now that are being spent are just being told they're coming from the general fund. There's really not that type of line item granularity where the community can understand what's going on. So as a board, I would really want to bring that back as well. So yeah, absolutely. Providing budgeting priorities, making those translate into dollars which can be approved, and then making sure that they reflect the informed consent of the community on how those tax dollars are being spent.
Thank you, Seth. Mike or Keegan on the budget?
I would just add one piece that I do think needs to be addressed right away is the state of the facilities themselves. You know, lead in the pipes, that kind of stuff. We've got to address that. It's known, but we have got to tackle that one head on. And we need to be allocating significant budget resources to do that.
Thank you. Keegan?
Yeah, so just to add on, you know, making sure that we've got, again, representatives from each of the buildings who are coming in and letting us know what the needs are at those particular buildings, kind of collating all those, making sure we understand what the needs are everywhere and then prioritizing, right? So I think the, one of the major roles of the board is to help prioritize those needs. But, you know, not to say that you don't get down to the item that's number six on the list, but which one is going to have the most impact on our students, which is going to help them be the most successful. Tackle those first and then work your way down.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this, again, the, the questions coming up are all going to have to do with budgeting. But what's your view on performance pay for all staff, not just the teaching staff? And there are no right or wrong answers, just?
Yeah, no, I honestly, I, I don't have a strong one right now, to be honest with you. It's something I haven't dug into. And rather than kind of blow a bunch of air out, I think I'll pass on that one and say that's something I would need to do some research on so that I became more knowledgeable about it and could make it an informed decision. So.
Fair enough. Any comment from?
So my gut likes it. I'm a capitalist and I, I like to believe that performance can be reflected or should be a large component of pay. So my gut tells me I like that. Being a fiscal conservative says, what is, what does the coffers say? So I'd, I'd have to evaluate, you know, my gut against what our budget can tolerate and where we'd be, you know, transferring those dollars from. But I, I would like to encourage any of our employees to, you know, put that extra effort in to make us as successful as possible.
Keegan, any comments on performance pay?
Yeah, so again, much like Mike, I'd have to look into it a little bit more to see if that's feasible for our district. You know, it's not unheard of, especially in the corporate world, to do such a thing. The company I work for, you know, we have annual reviews and then there is, you know, a possibility, depending on whatever you were rated, to receiving some sort of boost at the end of the year. But again, you know, it's something we need to make sure that we have the money for and is that where the most impact is going to be.
Thank you. Keegan, this is your question. Hypothetically, I never like it when a question starts that way. The Woodland Park School District just discovered a $10 million charitable fund donation from a donor decades ago. There are no strings attached for how the money can be spent. How would you spend that resource?
Oh, hypotheticals. Yeah, so that would be amazing. Again, like I was saying before, I think it's looking at all of the schools, seeing where our needs are greatest, and then allocating the money appropriately to each of those needs based on, you know, where the greatest impact is going to be. It could be, you know, making sure that our teachers have all of the supplies they need at the school so that they don't have to start a GoFundMe page or a Amazon account to buy binders for our students. You know, it could be making sure that our welding class has the materials they need so they don't have to do the fundraising there. It could be in teacher salaries. You know, we do lose a bunch of teachers every year just generally because the salaries are higher down in Colorado Springs and it's not a very far drive. But, so there's lots of things we could use the money on, facilities, repairs. But I think, again, it's, it's making that prioritization list and then spending it that way.
Thank you.
I definitely want to look at what we were not able to address in the current budget that was needed and start there. After that, I, my gut tells me turn it into a long-term return for this community. That kind of gift speaks to endowment for me. So if there's a way for us to invest it and get returns on that money, that'll benefit this community over a longer term, I'd be very interested exploring that.
Okay. Mike? Okay. This is for you then, Seth. How will you reassure the taxpayers that the Board of Education will be fiscally responsible toward, a fiscally responsible steward of district funds that include the 1.09% sales tax received via a ballot measure sought by the RE2 school district, which passed successfully in 2016?
Transparency, I believe, is, is a big part there. Being transparent almost inclines you to be a good steward, or else you're going to hear about it. So in, in kind of the best interest of, of myself, transparency, I think, solves a lot of that. In addition, I think we need to approach projects differently. One, they should be part of a long-term vision, part of that strategic plan of the district. If we're doing facilities work or making big spends, I want to make sure that this is money we know we're spending to the benefit of our school system and that we're largely in agreement on that. Number two is I'd like to see an open bid process. I see so many large projects happening, million-dollar security contracts, things like that, where I do agree, the intricate details of those may not need to be for public consumption in the interest of security. But certainly, we should know who the contenders are, what are the options, what services in, in general are we getting for this money? And how competitive is that? I think competitive bidding encourages financial stewardship as well because really, we're looking at the best bang for our buck over a number of providers at that point.
Input, Mike, on that 1.09% sales tax?
Yeah, I think we would need to reestablish a productive relationship between the Board of Education and the city council. I think that would be a great place to start. There used to be at least quarterly meetings between the city council and the Board of Education, and those have fallen by the wayside. That has got to be reestablished. There's a relationship there and that has to be kept healthy. So that's a huge part of it. I think there should be regular meetings with the county commissioners. Again, this is a community and we have got to reopen communication and a working relationship between these different entities that we don't have right now.
Keegan?
Yeah, so I think accountability is huge. One of the first things I would like to see done, you know, upon joining would be an audit. I'd like to know where the money has been going in the past. Again, you know, as a taxpayer and looking at the budget that is not itemized, I don't have a clear understanding of where we have been spending that money. And I would like to know that. So, you know, having someone come in and, and go through the records and, and present that would, would be something I would like to have done right away. And then again, you know, especially with the sales tax, in, in prior boards and, and in the past, we have made sure that the money we are spending of that sales tax was only being spent on the things that were already, were voter-approved, were spelled out in, in that voter-approved passage. And so I think going back to that, making sure we're not spending it on additional things, again, helps build that accountability. Everyone knows exactly where that's money, where that money is going, and it's already something we know is approved.
Thank you. Mike, this question is for you. Academics, activities, athletics and the arts often compete for school district resources. What is the relative importance of each and how might a district prioritize supporting them?
What were the four again?
Academics, activities, athletics and the arts.
Well, I think academics is number one. Clearly for me, I think that's number one. I think the three below that are fairly equal and I would probably look for community input on where they see the value most in those. I'm not in a position where I'm going to define for... I'm not in a position where I'm going to define, for all you good folks sitting here or watching at home, where that priority lies. I think that's part of the ongoing open communication between stakeholders. I will say, a healthy school district is able to provide all of those services and activities, and we have done that in the past, and we certainly can continue to do so, and I think grow those as well, so.
Seth or Keegan, talking about prioritizing those four areas. Keegan?
Yeah, so again, you know, the school was created to make sure that our students have a basic education level when they graduate. But those other areas are also vitally important, and, and important to understand that not all children or people in general are created the same way, right? Some of us have brilliant artistic minds, whether that's for the music, or actually painting, or drawing, or whether it's performing in, in plays. And I think the students themselves can tell us, if we're willing to listen, exactly which of those areas need more of the support, because it'll be the ones that are the most popular. And I think we need to listen to the students, especially in the regards of these extra activities, in, in making sure we're prioritizing in a way that best meets their needs.
And Seth?
So I would obviously prioritize academics for any school district. But for me, for arts, I think there's another counterpart that was enlisted there, and that's trades. I think arts and trades are equally important to be offered by a school district. I think there are two avenues towards a, a more informed and more active future for any, any kid coming out of our school. And then, of course, the extracurriculars are very important to a lot of our kids. Many of them provide opportunities and gateways to college that they're not getting through academics or those other things. So for budget priorities, for me, our, our core job is to educate, but then also, we want to inspire our kids to, to pursue their, their futures. So academic, arts and trades are equally important.
Thank you. Keegan? In school districts across the nation, school safety has become a primary focus and priority. What experience do you have with school or district safety, and what measures would you want implemented to help ensure safety for our students?
Well, professionally, I don't have a whole lot of experience in school safety. But as a parent with three children in the schools, I have experienced the safety measures that are already in place. So, you know, when I have, drop off my preschooler, I have to sign them in and write down the time that I dropped them in. When I sign them out, you know, I have to sign my name. If anyone else is going to pick them up, I have to make sure I'm handing in a note so that everyone is aware of what's happening there, you know? And then for the older children, if I ever have to bring, you know, drop something off, or if I'm there volunteering, I go to the front door, they have a camera, I have to stand there, they make sure, you know, I don't look dangerous. Then I come into that atrium, I give them my ID that they check, and then if that goes well, I get a visitor's badge with my picture on it so that everybody in the school is able to check my face to the pictures so that they know I've actually checked in. So I think all of those things are, are wonderful. You know, in, in my own days in school, my high school, we had an armed security guard at the front door, making sure that everyone was okay, and we also had SROs that would come in. And so, you know, I think both of those are vitally important and, and very helpful for the safety of, for any threats that may be coming from the outside. And then, you know, unfortunately, we've seen it in the news where there are instances where the danger is on the inside of the schools. And so I think, you know, making sure we have the proper resources, the proper professionals to come in and handle a crisis situation, the proper mental health professionals who are able to notice the warning signs before a tragedy happens and pull them aside and give them the help they need so that we don't have to deal with the aftermath.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I would like to see us try and rebuild the SRO program with the police department. That had been longstanding in the schools, and it fell by the wayside this year. And, you know, there were some opportunities by suggestions, given some of the issues Chief Deisler came up, you know, encountered with SROs, and I think we need to focus on pursuing some of those alternatives. You know, I know the incumbent board has talked about armed security in the schools, but, you know, this is another example of, I don't have any idea what that means, and I've been paying attention. It is just unclear what that means, who those folks would be, what their training would be, that type of stuff. So I would like to see it sort of back to the SRO program in some form.
So I do have a, a background in, in some sort of facilities hardening and security. So I would like to see that standardized across all of our facilities, the different measures that we take. There is some deviation from school to school. I think it's important that all of our employees and all of our students know how to handle a situation, no matter which building they're in. I, like Mike and Keegan, would love to see the SRO program be rebuilt. I've had personal experience with my student and that program, and I think having that police officer involved in the school and knowing those students was so beneficial. Not only that, we're kind of living in a time where police officers really are, are not commonly viewed as, as friendly, and I think that's such a disappointment. I saw that SRO in the middle school, and he built trust there. The kids loved him. Every other police officer that walked in that building had inherited trust from that officer that was there interacting with the kids every day. I think it's also a wonderful opportunity to intervene before things get to that level. With SROs, they've got a little bit more discretion than security officers who have to follow district policy.
Seth, thank you. Seth, this is your question. Our community seems more divided today on public education issues than in past years. Please explain the connection between Merit Academy Charter School and other Woodland Park School District schools. And as a school board member, where do you stand on Merit Academy Charter School?
I am absolutely delighted that Merit is part of our community. It was hundreds of kids that were looking elsewhere, and now they're back in our district. I don't necessarily agree with the process that decision was made in, but I definitely think it should be made. That being said, Merit is one of six of our district's schools, and I absolutely should be supported as such. They are a little bit of a special snowflake, being a charter school, because they are self-governing. They have their own board that decides their curriculum, that decides their policies, that does their hiring, and those types of things. So really, as a district, we're there to help them secure their funding and provide our facilities and, and, I'm sorry, live up to our facilities use agreement that we have in place with them. So really, we're going to be looking at Merit, just like any of the other schools, year after year, saying, what do you need? What do you need to be successful? How is we, as a district as a whole, can support you as that? And I think just bringing them so much more into the fold, instead of treating it as there's Merit in our five schools, it's, there's our six schools. One of them is Merit, one of them's Columbine, one of them's Summit, one of them's Gateway, one of them's the middle school, and one of them's the high school. And we, as a community, are going to do everything we can to see all of them successful. We should be that rising tide that lifts all boats. So that's, that's my view on Merit and our community, and I think, once we get rid of that division, like there's some way that they're not part of those six schools, I, I think everything else just melts away. I loved seeing them at the homecoming parade. They were right in there, just like it should be with the whole town cheering them on, so.
Thank you. Mike, comments on our charter school?
Yeah, so much like Seth said, I'm, I'm glad that Merit is here. Again, there was a large number of students, a large number of families, who were unhappy with the current school district and what it was able to provide. They have moved on to, to Merit, and that means they are staying up here, which means their children can still, you know, participate in the activities up here, their friends are still up here, and I think that's a wonderful thing to have. You know, it's one of the reasons my kids are up here, too. I want their life to be here in Woodland Park. And so I think it's important that those families have that ability as well. And again, I, I think a lot of the tension that has, you know, kind of come up between them is because of a lack of communication. There is a misunderstanding on both sides, why decisions are being made, who's making those decisions, who's benefiting from those decisions, and that, that lack of information creates distrust and anger, and I think we can get rid of that and make sure we're incorporating them in completely.
Thank you, Keegan. Mike?
Yeah, and I was going to add, I think the narrative is false, that there is Merit, and if Merit succeeds, the traditional public schools fail. And if the traditional public schools succeed, Merit fails. That is not true. There are many, many school districts across this nation that have charter school options as well as traditional public schools, and they all thrive. We can be that. It just takes a shift in perception, I think, to get there, and that is something we can absolutely do.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, and for all of you, we have three more questions, and then I'll ask the press if they have any questions. But Mike, this question is for you. We've talked a great deal about the school board members and the superintendent. Who do you believe are the stakeholders in our public schools, and how will you ensure that those stakeholders have a say in the district's decisions?
Yeah, I think the stakeholders are the teachers, the students, first of all, then the teachers, then there's parents, and then I think there's taxpayers as well. I think they're all stakeholders in the district. And so I think the way you encourage that collaboration between all of them is, again, we sound like a broken record, but there's a reason. We've got to open up the communication lines. We've got to stop being surprised by decisions that the Board of Education is making. We've got to ask for that input ahead of time so that we can plan a rollout of a new policy, for example, and it's clear before anything actually changes. You know, I think so much of the negative feelings that have gone on back to, between Merit and the traditional public schools, is because people just don't understand what's happening. And then all of a sudden, things are changing, and it, that's very disconcerting, and it's hard to understand what's happening, and it's hard not to view it as a sense of, well, why are they getting everything and why are we not? Why are we getting everything and why are they not? And I just think that's a false narrative. It's true right now, unfortunately, but I do think that's repairable. And, you know, I think you've got to balance the needs, but I think the number one overriding focus on all of that should be setting our children up for success once they graduate. That has got to be the driving force behind all of this, and you can take stakeholder input, and you can have that open communication, and then the Board of Education is making that ultimate decision. But I think it's a lot less divisive if everyone understands the conversation that happens and the debate that happens along the way.
Thank you, Mike. Seth or Keegan on stakeholders?
I'll, I'll just expand the, the stakeholders that Mike listed. In addition to parents and teachers and students and taxpayers, there's a, a bunch of community organizations that are involved in our schools, like the Rotary Club. They sponsor, or different clubs in, in our middle schools and elementary schools and high schools. There are just so many people who are involved and invested and don't know necessarily how they can best contribute. So I'd like to bring those stakeholders back in as well, kind of regular reporting or rapport with the school district and our community organizations. And we also briefly touched on it earlier. The city of Woodland Park is a major stakeholder. They provide a 1.09% sales tax that actually benefits areas outside of the city of Woodland Park. They're funding Summit, they're funding all of our area schools in the interest of all of our WPSD students. So they're a partner in our education, and that extends to the county as well. So really, all of those groups, bringing them in and seeking their collaboration.
Keegan, on stakeholders?
Yeah, and, and so I'll just add one more, which would be business owners. I know they can kind of be included in the taxpayers as well, but I think they should be specifically called out. I think one of the opportunities we're missing right now is in a, is the collaboration with business owners to create internship opportunities or apprenticeship opportunities. I know there are quite a few organizations and quite a few businesses in our community who want to have that, who want to provide that opportunity for our students, but have not been able to collaborate with our board currently to make those things happen, and they're just, they just really want to be able to do that. And so I would say, you know, making sure we're working with the business owners as well.
Thank you, Keegan. I, I just saw Deb jump up in her seat just a little bit there. Okay. Keegan, this is our next to last question. How should the school board involve staff, parents, and the community in key district decisions? An example of a key decision might be changing K through five elementary schools to K through six elementary schools. Again, how would we involve the community in those decisions?
Yeah. Again, so those decisions must be made at school board meetings. Those decisions must be made in a public forum. And so, you know, I think even before you work on making those decisions, you, those stakeholders, those teachers, those administrators, who would be directly impacted in those decisions, who would have best insight into how those decisions would impact their building, their students, they need to be brought in. They need to come to the school board meeting. You know, I would have loved to see, in that specific instance, having a question asked. Are you able to house these students? What does that look like? How much money is it going to cost us to, to move them back in? What services and, and supplies do the sixth grade need that are not currently at those buildings? You know, and, and is it possible for us to, to bring them in and have that part of the discussion before the decision is made?
Anyone else would like to comment on that?
Yeah, I think in general, what we've seen over the last couple of years is a lot of piecemeal decisions, and I think we need to slow down, and I think we need to plan decisions out. I think when you're talking about installing $100,000 worth of walkers in the middle school for the sixth graders, or in the elementary schools, yeah, in the elementary schools, you know, we should be bidding that process out, and that did not happen. So I think we need to slow this down, understand what we're getting into, then make the decision. And I think we've gone in the opposite direction some over the last two years.
Seth, comment on that, and then you'll have the last question.
Really, it is about moving up the timeline of when we discuss things with people. Instead of bringing things up in the public at the end, we're going to just do it at the beginning, or at least that's going to be my goal. If we're considering changing something as a policy, we're going to sit there at a school board meeting and say, hey, we're considering looking at this policy, we're opening up a stakeholder group, reach out to, you know, the district secretary or whoever if you want to be involved, and that'll be the beginning of that process. So right away from the start, the community is going to be involved. We're going to at least have an idea of what a decision that reflects WPSD looks like at the end.
Thank you, Seth. Seth, our last question from the chamber is, should students and families have access to mental health services at school? What do you see as the relationship between the student mental health and academic achievement?
If students don't come to school ready to learn, if they're distracted, if they're in crisis, if they haven't eaten in a day or two, if mom and dad are fighting, they are not going to be ready to learn. And now, that's not saying that our school district needs to be each and every child's therapist or mental health provider or anything like that, but we do need to make sure that our kids have the supports they need to come to the classroom ready to absorb and understand information. I also believe that our schools are one of the most efficient places to identify and integrate these types of supports. Our teachers spend almost 40 hours a week with our children during the school year. They're going to start seeing changes in our kids if they're going through crisis. They're going to start seeing behavioral patterns being altered. They're going to start seeing performance slip, even maybe before we do at home. So that kind of partnership, and for them to be able to direct a student to support is critical. Early intervention is the easiest time to correct a trajectory. And as a fiscal conservative, early intervention is also the cheapest time for us to address problems. I do want to point out something. We spent 10 years building crisis response teams, mental health programs here at WPSD, and those happened with the supports of well over $1 million in grants that have been refused. We have been told we are not the Department of Health and Human Services, but I do think that there's a story to be told with the success of the programs we had. Teller County is a hotspot for youth suicides. We average almost three times the national average. That's, that's a heartbreaking statistic. Over the past six years with the programs that we have built in our schools, there has not been one student suicide. Last year, there were 60 interventions. The problem has not gone away. We built incredible programs to support our students when they were at that point. And that, to me, is one of the most critical issues at this election, is really, how are we? is really, how are we going to support our students as a community? Is student health, in its whole entirety, a priority for us? Is making sure students reach graduation in WPSD important? And I think mental health is a huge component of that answer we give as a community.
Seth, thank you. Save that enthusiasm. Mike and Keegan, please, go ahead.
Where are you going down?
There you go.
Thank you.
Take as much time as you need on this last question, please.
So just to add to that a little bit, you know, to what Seth said, the needs that were being addressed by the professionals in our schools prior to their removal have not gone away. The students who needed help and were receiving help still need that help. But now we do not have the mental health professionals. So now we are asking our teachers to not only teach their students, but also take care of the mental health needs of the students that are in crisis. So that means they are taking time away from the rest of the class, and instruction is not happening because they need to address the student. Of course, that student needs help. But it is absolutely unrealistic and seriously unfair to the teacher and to all of those students to remove those extra support systems and expect a teacher to be able to succeed in teaching their whole class and fill that role as a mental health professional. So I think we need to bring it back.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, there's, justifications have been given for cutting the mental health grants. You know, I think it's important to keep in mind that parents have always had a right to opt out of those services. Nobody was being forced into those services in our school district. Parents have always had the opportunity to say, not for my kid, and that's your right to do so. The problem I have with the current policy is that choice has been taken away from me to have my child served by those professionals while she would be in school if she needed that. That's not parents' choice. That's a school board choice for all of us. And I think it's the wrong direction we need to go. Now, I'm not opposed to offering a private healthcare service or alternative for those parents or families who might not agree with some of the questions that were tied to the mental health grants, and that's perfectly fine. But let's remember, we're supposed to be increasing choice, not minimizing it. And I think we've gone the wrong direction the last two years.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of the chamber's provided questions. We have two representatives from the media here. And I'll start with our representative from the Courier. Pat, do you have a question? And it'll be, if it's for all three, just let them know.
Pat, hang on a minute. We want to get it on film. We want to get it on. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Okay, good. You know, we hear a lot about the American birthright. And I'm thinking, what's wrong with it? So I'm, you know, obviously, it's not standards. We already know that. Why do you think our kids shouldn't adopt that or be learning that standard? You brought it up, so maybe?
Yeah, I guess that's right. Yeah, so there's a couple of different things. One, it doesn't meet the state's standards. So the state has criteria they use to judge curriculum. And obviously, this one does not meet that. The second would be, you know, and I've learned a lot of this through our campaigning process and the study I've done here. But, you know, there's a way of judging criteria called Bloom's taxonomy. And so it has the six tiers of standards, right? So the first level, first two really are about being able to memorize facts and spit them back out. So that's a lot of what you would expect a young child to be able to do. They can remember simple facts, and they can tell you about them, you know, and give that back to you. And then at level six, that would be being able to take information that you've learned, probably from a variety of different classes, combine them, and create something new. So to me, you know, that's hugely important. You know, that's what I would like my children to be able to do. And the American birthright standards, if you read through it, less than half of them reach beyond a level two. Less than half of those standards go beyond just pure memorization. We're not even asking our kids at any point, none of them, reach a level five or six. So we are never asking our students, who are pushing out into the world and saying, yes, you're ready, we are never asking them to take information and be able to create something new. And to me, that's hugely important, and for a couple of different reasons. So for one, for anyone who's looking to go to college, you're probably going to have to, at some point, defend your stance on something. Right now, we are up here defending our stance on things. I would not be able to do that if all I had ever learned in school was to be able to memorize facts and spit them back out. I could not articulate myself, you know, articulate up here what I am trying to say. And so, you know, so for students looking to go into academics, I think that's vitally important. But then also for students who are looking to go into trades, you know, being able to take, look at a problem and utilize the information you've learned your whole life and come up with a solution to that problem, that's the type of person you want to employ, right? If you're a carpenter, if you're a welder, if you're a mechanic, at some point, you're gonna face a problem. And at some point, it's gonna be up to you to fix it. And the boss does not want an employee who they have to stand over every second of the day and say, okay, now do this. Okay, now fix this. Here's the problem, here's how you fix it. They want someone they can employ, send out into the world, and know that the job's going to get done. So no matter what you plan on doing, you need those skills to succeed. Or otherwise, you're not going to get the job. You're not going to get the scholarship. You're not going to be able to live successfully. So that's why I don't like it.
Thank you.
Don't apologize. That's why we're here, Keegan. I was gonna add to that. The Civics Alliance is the organization that created the American birthright standards. On the Civics Alliance website, they recommend getting rid of AP classes. I cannot foresee a world where I would agree with that. Our students need to be given every opportunity to succeed. And if they're on a college track, compete with national students on the college track. Without AP classes, you can't get above a 4.0 GPA. I believe that handicaps our students massively. And I want to be clear. This sitting board has not advocated getting rid of AP classes yet, but that is recommended by Civics Alliance. So we all need to be aware of that. And I think that's a problem. I think that this, you know, I have a first-grade daughter. I want her to learn how to think for herself. I don't need her to parent me. I hope she takes my values, and I hope she incorporates them into her worldview. Ultimately, that's her choice, not mine. Once she becomes a functioning adult, I am not afraid of looking at the ugly parts of American history and digging into those to see the whys, the hows, the what happened, all of that. And the American birthright standards very much stays to the surface of those controversial subjects. You know, you talk slavery, you talk, it could be Japanese internment, World War II, any number of things. You know, I want my daughter to have more than a surface-level introduction into those types of controversial subjects. I think that's critical. And I think without that, I don't think we're providing well-rounded education. And I think that has to be there. That doesn't make me any less patriotic than any other American either. That just means that I believe that it can hold up to the examination and the analysis. And I think that that's what we should be training our children to do.
I'll pair it again, Keegan and Mike there. It falls short as far as challenging our students intellectually and building them as thinking adults. It's also glossing over some pretty complex topics in American history. And for me, that's very disappointing because so much of the potential in America is where we've come and where we started. It was a great experiment in liberty, and we have permutated it to this point and really created something interesting. Slavery, I'll just gloss over that. I think it's important to understand what an absolute scourge slavery was and a scar on this country's history. I also think it's equally important for kids to realize there was about 70 years between the United States becoming a country and when we came together and fought a war to end slavery. That's a pretty quick turnaround as far as a political organization goes in the scheme of things. And I'm very proud of that as an American, that we addressed slavery. And we had to deal with the fallout and consequences of that sense, but we continue to address it. We are striving to be that more perfect union that our founding fathers set us out to be. So I don't want that glossed over. I want kids to understand the wholeness and complexity of that and where we have come from since then and how we even got there. Because that's what creates an informed adult who's not bound to make the same types of mistakes.
Check, check.
Can you guys hear me all right? A lot of you have talked about changes with the, talked a lot about the role of the superintendent. Are you proposing any changes in the current superintendent position? And if you are, what about like any impacts on the fiscal situation with the district? Anyone getting started?
Sure, so right now, we do have a contract with the superintendent. Anything around, any decision around that would have to be weighed against the contract. That being said, he's only here under a year contract. So at some point, we are absolutely going to have to evaluate our superintendent if we want to renew their contract or if there should be a change. That could happen at the very beginning. As we start looking at what we want as a district, we might realize that the employee that we have might not be the one who can execute our vision going forward. And extending their contract may not be a good choice. I think we should constantly be looking at the people we have and the decision-makers in our district and asking, is this the person who's going to lead our district in the direction we want it to? As a board, we've got one person really to look at and instruct them how to hire the rest of them. So for me, I'm going to be highly, highly critical of our superintendent, the decisions they make, the way they behave themselves and interact with our stakeholders, and the values that they're displaying through that process.
Yeah, so just to add to that, I think, you know, one of the major responsibilities of a school board is to hold the superintendent accountable. So regardless of who it is, there needs to be an evaluation process annually. All right, what were the goals set for the superintendent? Are they meeting them? Are they taking our school district in the direction that we need and want them to go? So, and if it gets to the point where the superintendent is not following through with all of that, it is absolutely the school board's obligation to remedy that. So whether that means finding someone new or putting in, you know, some sort of, you know, process that the superintendent has to follow, whether that's training or specific short-term goals that we need them to reach to fulfill these needs. You know, it is the board's responsibility with the superintendent as their sole employer, employee, to make sure that they are following through, just like they would with any other employee.
I'll agree with Seth and Keegan, and just add one thing. It sure would be great to have a superintendent who worked up here full-time.
Thank you. Those are the questions that we'll entertain from our members of the press. And I'll take this one question. We had several questions that came up from the audience, but I'll take this one and only one in the time consideration. And then we'll end with our closing statements. But the question that, one of the questions that we received from the audience is, and I'm gonna start this with Keegan. How would you ensure the inclusion and safety of our LGBTQ kids? Make it a safe place for all kids?
So I think school needs to be a safe place for everyone, right? So we need to make sure we have accommodations that meet the needs of all of our students, whether that is a student who, you know, is in a wheelchair and they need a ramp, or if they have special bathroom, you know, requirements, we make sure that we have specific answers for them. I think we need to make sure that we don't have a very set idea of what a Woodland Park student is. We need to make sure, as a public school, that we're serving the needs of all of the children who are here, regardless of what that means. You know, the LGBTQ community, in particular, has a difficult time across the nation. It's hard to be different. But I think as long as we have a culture in our schools that makes everyone know for whatever, you know, regardless of what that reason is, that you feel different, that you are accepted, and that there's something, you know, wonderful about you, and there are things to be nurtured. You know, if you have needs, we can accommodate those. If you have concerns, we can find a way to fulfill them. I think, you know, we can make sure that those children feel heard and feel loved and have a sense of belonging.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I would add that this is another key place where I think the 15 mental health professionals would have played a key role that currently are not in the schools. I think we need to have that offering for our students, all of our students across the board. And I think that's a key piece.
So I'll echo Keegan again. I think our schools should be welcoming and safe for all of our kids. For me, a big part of that is anti-bullying. Not only education programs, but policies that, you know, encourage a culture of support, not one where we're going to single people out and make them feel less than. So in addition to making sure that our students are appropriately accommodated, I want to make sure that our other students and all of our schools have a culture where bullying and that type of exclusion would not be tolerated so that, again, all of our kids feel welcome and safe at school, whether that be from teachers or from their fellow students or the staff that work those buildings.
And thank you for that question from the audience. I'd like now to begin with our closing statements. Keegan, we'll start with you because we started with you in the beginning.
Let's see if the timing is good this time.
Take all the time.
Yeah, so I think what I really want to impress upon everybody tonight is just the importance of this election. You know, I see this election as much more of a choice between candidates. It's a choice between what you see as the future for this community. The school board, the school itself has such a huge impact on our community. It's one of the largest employers, and obviously, most of our students attend the schools here. So it is a huge component of our community. And what I have seen in the last two years, again, is chasing away our students and chasing away our teachers. And in bringing in these outside political agendas is not working for Woodland Park. And I am afraid, honestly, for what Woodland Park is going to look like if the board that is currently there stays for another four years. We've seen what they have done in just two years, and we know what their plan is. And I really think that the future of our traditional public schools is on the line. So when you go to your ballot box, when you're talking to your neighbors, you know, just think about that choice. It's not just a choice between candidates. It's a choice between having a voice in what the future of Woodland Park looks like and letting somebody else dictate to you what those choices are. It's a choice between giving our students the opportunity to learn and grow and providing a curriculum that just doesn't even encourage that. It's a choice between having open discussion and open forum and back rooms political decisions. So really, please, when you're, when you're, think about who you're voting for, think about the future that you want for Woodland Park because that is what is at stake in this election. That is what you're voting for. You're not voting for me. You're not voting for them. You're voting for what you want this school to look like, what you want this town to look like, and what you want our students to be able to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Keegan. Mike? Thank you, Keegan. Mike?
My daughter, her first-grade class jumped from 16 students to 30 this year. There is not a full-time para provided for that teacher in her class. It got so loud in her class. For the first time, we are blessed with a child who just gets school. She loves school. For the first time this year, she came home complaining that it was too loud and she didn't want to go back. That is heartbreaking as a parent. We bought her noise-canceling headsets to wear in her first-grade classroom in the hope she could focus. Now, this is nothing against the teacher. The teacher is phenomenal, and she's doing everything that we can. But the fact is, 30 kids in one room is loud. There's another family I know who pulled their kid out of Gateway because her class was 20 kids. They had a couple behavioral-issue kids, and the teacher was spending 80% of her time dealing with those few kids because there is no additional staff provided to help those teachers with that. You know, it's a simple question I have is, for those who have parents who have students in the district right now, do you feel like your child's school experience is better now than it was three years ago? And if you do, you should vote for the incumbents. If you don't, you should vote for us. I think that's really what this comes down to. I think it's easy to see the decisions being made that have led us in this direction as being, oh, it's poor management, or they're just not listening, or they just don't care. To me, it goes far beyond that. I think this incumbent board has plans to replace our traditional public schools with charter schools. They already brought one in last year that was going to start the application process and then backed out. That was not a mistake. I think it's very evident that that is the direction we're going to go. And I think that is not healthy for our community. We should have the choice between a charter or charters, if another one were to come into being, in our traditional public schools. We have got to keep that choice to be a healthy community. So I think, ask yourself that question. Is your student better off now? And I think it's pretty clear what the answer is for most of us.
Well, thank you all so much for spending time tonight. And thank you very much to the chamber for putting this on. I'm real hopeful about November. For two years, I have watched national narratives being projected onto Woodland Park by people from outside our community who aren't stakeholders in the outcome of what's going to happen here. For them, it's an experiment in what can happen in public schools. For me, this is my kid's future and our kid's future and our town's future. If we don't have healthy public schools, we're going to stop attracting new families. If we stop attracting new families, businesses are going to see a decline in business and patronage. This is how our community starts to die. And I deliberately chose this place because I fell in love with it. I fell in love with people who knew each other's name at the grocery store and at the gas station. I fell in love with our kids' teachers the first year we were here. They were so involved. I knew they loved them like they were their own. I've absolutely firmly decided this is the place that I want to live the rest of my life. And so please know that that is the level of commitment and conviction that I hold, this responsibility. The decisions that we make, we all have children in these schools. That's something very different than the incumbents. The decisions we are making are going to directly play out on our own children's academic outcomes. We want to make the best decisions for that reason, and we want that for your kids, too. It's a hard thing to watch as a community, but I really think we're at a crossroads right now, and we're at a turning point. There is a different trajectory we can take this November. There is a different tone that we can approach our schools with. We can increase collaboration. We can increase consent from parents, from the community that's supporting the school system. And it really starts with each and every one of you checking three boxes when you get a ballot. So please, make sure you vote. Make sure that you encourage your friends and family to vote. If people trust you, talk to them about your experience. Talk to them why you're going to vote, one way or another. It is critical that we have people voicing their opinion because really, like Keegan said, this is an unfortunate state. Our community is at a turning point. We've got some significant stakes in this decision. And I don't know that we've ever seen a school board election like this before, and I hope we don't have to again. But I am so happy that you have all taken the time to be interested in it, to try and discern what's really going on from all the noise that's out there. And I hope regardless what happens, that we all take a breath and focus on people as neighbors again. And let's not vilify each other anymore. Let's try and understand what's going on and just open that dialogue back up. So thank you again. Thank you, Ms. Harvey, for moderating. Ms. Miller, for setting this up along with your board. And that's all I got.
So before we close, yes, go ahead. You've waited all night. Sorry.
Okay, Carol has some closing statements. But before we go, there's a couple of things I want to share. It is with pure heart and intent that the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce put together this candidate's forum, as we have in the last 19 years, for elections throughout this community. It was our goal to the last second that we would have all six. I was called and asked, could they show up? Absolutely. We were prepared for that. So that's who we are. And I hope you saw tonight, from the questions that were asked, sorry. This is not a gotcha. We have never, as a chamber, performed a gotcha candidate's forum. That's not who we are. It was thrilling to hear candidates mention something about business because business and education go hand in hand. So last, before I turn it over to Carol, what I will tell you is I believe that the ballots will be dropping very soon for military families that will be going out early. Next week, the ballots drop. Before entering into the chamber field, I was in the political field back in Illinois. In my first election with the state representative that I worked for, we had 200,000 voters in our district, and he won by 67 votes. We know here personally with our city council election. So to reiterate that it's so important for our community when those ballots come out, when someone has the attitude of, oh, my vote doesn't matter, your vote is critical. It does matter. That's your voice. So I'm going to turn it over to Carol.
Well, thank you, Tab. I really had nothing more than to say, everyone drive safely home. But I want to thank all six of the candidates running for the school board positions that are open this year. It's a thankless job, I know from my own time in public service. And guess what? You don't get paid. I just wanted to make sure you knew that. But thank you so much for your candor. Thank you for sharing your personal stories. And thank you. Thank you to all. And as I said, drive carefully. Good night.